I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ask the clerk please to hold on.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Sauer?
Here.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mayor May.
Here. We do have a point and would ask that any action on the minutes be addressed? Commissioner Bowers?
I was just gonna make a motion for most of the minutes and let somebody else approve. I missed the January 5th one, so I need that we adopt the minutes of January 12th, January 16th special meeting, January 26th special meeting, and January 26th. And then that leaves January 5th for separate reasons, so that's my motion that we adopt those.
Second. Move back Commissioner Bowers. Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussions? CNN clerk please call.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, those are approved. Someone make a motion on the January 5th meeting?
Move by approval of the January 5th meeting.
Move by Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Sauer. Any discussion? CNN clerk please hold.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, the minutes are approved. Next item, we have ceremonial items, but I don't think we have any tonight. So next item would be citizen comments. Are there any citizens that would like to come forward? And if you don't mind, please state your name and don't have to give your address, just state... I'm sorry, I was gonna let her come up since I didn't see... You can come up next, Mr.... Okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Courtney Nitsch. I'm here because I am the executive director of the Miss Capital City Pageant. And if you've never heard of the Miss Capital City Pageant, it's because this is the first annual Miss Capital City Pageant. It's happening this March, couple blocks away at Frankfurt High School. We are an official Miss America local preliminary. And what that means is that our winner will win a $500 scholarship and go on to compete at the Miss Kentucky Pageant in July, where thousands more dollars in scholarships will be available for her to earn. And so this is actually, the Miss America organization is the largest provider for scholarships for college-aged women in the world. So it's a wonderful nonprofit organization, and we're glad to bring this here to Frankfurt for the first year. Our contestants compete in private interview, swimsuits, talent, evening gown, and onstage question. So we're looking for a very well-rounded, articulate, intelligent young lady to represent us at the state level. And I just wanted to invite each and every one of you guys to come on down to our event. I hope that this is something that evolves into a beloved community function every year. Again, it's March 21st, 6 o'clock, that's a Saturday. I tried my best to pick a Saturday that there wouldn't be a UK game. It will be during March Madness, so we'll see. And it's at Frankfurt High again. They have been wonderful to work with. And if you know any young, college-aged or high school women for our teen category, send them my way. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, too. Thanks for being here. And Mr. Marcus?
Hi, I'm Sam Marcus, board president of Franklin County Humane Society. And before I get to the reason I'm here, I wanted to thank you for something else, and that is the work that you did to keep us safe over this terrible winter weather the past week. And certainly to thank our Public Works and my buddy Tommy Russell for emergency management and all that you all did during this terrible weather. Actually, I came here tonight to thank you all, to express my appreciation for your support regarding the animal ordinance, but also more than that regarding all our other interactions that we've had together over the past year or so. Really appreciate what the commission and the mayor has done for the Franklin County Humane Society. We're excited about these ordinance changes. We think that it will allow us to have even more humane and better care of our companion animals in Frankfurt and Franklin County. If you don't mind, I'd also especially like to thank our city attorney, Rob Moore, and our city clerk, Ramona Newman, for their efforts behind the scenes to do the research and to create the ordinance amendments. Anyway, very much appreciate your assistance with all this, and we'll look forward to serving you in the future.
Thank you for all the great work you all are doing. Appreciate it. Okay, any other citizen comments? Just while we had a second, we're still dealing with winter issues out there, but just I know on behalf of all the commissioners and our staff, we say thanks to all that have been out there, and sometimes with not much breaks. So I know Public Works has shared the brunt of that, but the other departments have pitched in and have been out there with them. So we thank you all, and if commissioners want to say anything since we're...
I'll just say, I saw you all working on my street, and it was like y'all did a wonderful job.
I'm just glad you didn't work here when I was in high school and in middle school, or we would've never gone sleigh riding on the road, which is what I got a lot of pleasure out of.
I just think it was a fabulous job, and it was wonderful to see all of the departments working together for one benefit, and that's the benefit of the city of Franklin.
I was iced in down in Nashville, Tennessee. I do appreciate all the emails that keep me abreast of what was going on, and I also appreciate you clearing the road so I could get back.
Great. I'm sure we'll have a wrap-up later, but this, we'll keep our fingers crossed for the next couple of days. The next item would be ordinances, first reading and second reading. We have 4.1, second reading. Would ask this be read by title, summary only, and then entertain any kind of motions.
Mayor, by title, an ordinance amending, this is 4.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 37 Personnel and Chapter 40 Police Department and Fire Department, Sections 37.31, 40.24, 40.30, 40.32, and 40.36 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances Regarding Fire Department Personnel. And then by summary, this ordinance amends Section 37.31E of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, which contains the job classifications of the city, and Sections 40.24, 40.30, 40.32, and 40.36 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances concerning the provisions applicable to the position of lieutenant in the fire department by eliminating the position of lieutenant from the city fire department and reclassifying all fire lieutenants as fire captains.
Any questions, or are you ready for... I'm ready for a motion if you are.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? CNN clerk please call.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 4.1 is adopted. Next would be first reading of 4.2, so we'd ask that this be read by title and summary only.
By title, an ordinance amending Chapter 90 Animals, Section 90.20, Pet License Required, Section 90.23, Empoundment, 90.24, Reclamation by Owner or Custodian, and 90.25 Adoption of Dog or Cat. Time limit of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. And the summary is, this ordinance adjusts the fees charged to persons licensing, reclaiming, and/or adopting dogs and cats, amends the time period for impounding cats, and establishes a trap, neuter, and release pilot program for feral cats.
Okay, it's had its first reading. Thank you. Any questions? Next item would be orders. We have Order 5.1, and this is an order concerning employment end dates. This just changes the way employees are paid based on their end date of employment. It does require adoption.
Make a motion, we adopt.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Roach. Second by Commissioner Bowers. Any discussion? CNN clerk please call.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 5.1 is adopted. Next item would be resolutions. A resolution authorizing the filing or entering into an agreement with Kentucky Department of Homeland Security for the law enforcement protection program. And this would be for 11 vests with options, and the LAPP grant will reimburse $7,315, which grants $65 for each vest, leaving $5,215.09 for the city to pay for each account. So if there's any questions, we'll answer those. If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we adopt.
Move by Commissioner Roach. Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? CNN clerk please call.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 6.1 is adopted. Next item would be consent calendar items. I believe, and I had a request to remove 7.5 and 7.10 at the request of Commissioner Sauer, just for further explanation for the benefit of the public. So if there's no objections, we'll take those items and put them under new business. That's 10.2 and 10.3?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next item, consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7.1 is a four-year city audit contract with Charles T. Mitchell CPA with an annual average fee of $31,500. Item 7.2 is to declare various city items as surplus to be sold at public auction on March 28th at the city's street department garage. Item 7.3 is an 8% auctioneer agreement with Joe Penn Auctioneer for the sale of city items on March 28th. Item 7.4 is authorized approval to solicit bids to purchase 65 electric golf carts for Juniper Hill Golf Course, replacing units that were purchased in 2008. Item 7.6 is a $709,800 contract award to Meyer Midwest Incorporated to construct the Transit Wash Bay, $703,000 of which will be paid by a grant through the Department of Transportation Delivery. Item 7.7, annual renewal of not to exceed $76 per month lockbox agreement between Community Trust Bank and the Frankfurt Ambulance Billing Service. Item 7.8 is a $22,000 annual Smart 911 contract payment with rave mobile safety. Item 7.9 is a $24,187 state contract purchase of a 2014 F-150 pickup truck for annual control, replacing a 2003 pickup with about 190,000 miles. Item 7.11 is personnel. We have a promotion of Bobby Rippey from GIS Analyst 2 to IT Manager effective 1/27/15. We have the appointment of Marshall Fitzgerald as Sewer Plant Operator Trainee effective 2/24/15, and the appointment of Victoria Jones as Office Assistant effective 2/3/15. That concludes your report, Your Honor.
Thank you. All need a motion to approve consent calendar.
So move.
Move by Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. All members who signify their presence tonight in the affirmative will be considered to have voted in the affirmative on consent calendar items unless they file vote modification forms with the city clerk. I don't believe there is any vote modification forms filed, so consent items are approved. Next item would be appointments. Appointments.
Mayor, can I ask you a question about appointments real quick?
Absolutely.
We were at something the other day, KCDC. They asked about when they were gonna be getting an appointment.
So I've talked with them directly about that, and I'm trying to find... That board does not balance the way I think it should be representation, so I'm trying to find someone that lives in the city that can do it.
Okay. Because I guess we haven't had anybody on there for some time.
Dr. Rigel resigned.
Yeah.
So that board has five males on it now, and I just felt like we needed a female. All right, next item, old business. Is there any old business?
Mayor, there's some things that I want to bring up, but I didn't know whether to do it as new business, old business, or the end of the meeting. What's the most appropriate?
If it's something that's... I don't think it really... Does anyone object if it's not under the right category? Well, because we're probably gonna go into new... Does anybody have any other old business?
I got a couple that are quick.
Well, first of all, you know, I was affected by this storm that we had. Friday at 1:30 in the afternoon, I received a call from the Sauer Building that something was going on because the alarm outside on St. Clair Street was going wild. And so I got the call at 1:30. I ran up there as fast as I could, obviously. The fire department beat me there, and I only had to go two and a half blocks. So they're quick in response. And the people that responded from the fire department were Battalion Chief Chuck Thompson, firefighter Patrick Ford, and firefighter Cale Gilbert. I just wanted to compliment the fire department as to how professional, how well organized, mannerly they went about their business. It was just bam, 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 and the issue was taken care of. A sprinkler system had burst and poured. We've got 30 rooms or offices in the Sauer Building, and only one was affected. It happened to be Phyllis Sauer's office. She was not happy, but we were delighted with the response of the fire department. I wanted to commend them. Secondly, having gone through that experience, I am sure our own fire marshal inspects city property once a year probably to check the alarm systems, the sprinkler systems, the fire extinguishers, and so forth. And I'd like to see that report maybe at our next work session, or if one is pending, we can wait till later, since I think it's such an important issue now. Secondly, just throwing out for the commission in general to consider, or to explore, as you all like to use the term, I noticed that Jeff Hancock, you know, is now open on the, basically, the third Saturday and the fourth Saturday. I think that would be a particularly good idea to consider, especially in terms of planning and zoning. We have a lot of both business people and homeowners that, you know, would rather not take off from work, and I think that's what Jeff is trying to do. When I was in Shelbyville, Sue Carol Perry, the clerk there, had Saturday morning hours. And I think Jeff is just doing a half-day on those particular days twice a week. So I'd like perhaps the city manager to explore that idea and see if that might be something we ought to consider in the future. Another thing, and here again, we may be doing this already, Mayor, but I'm not sure. You know, not everybody out there has computers, and they can't log on to Facebook at the city or Emergency Management or over at the State Journal. And I don't know if we make use of all of the radio stations in Frankfurt and the plant board as far as getting information out. We've had issues, as we all know, about garbage and pickup, and maybe it was gonna start last Wednesday, but we had to change it because of certain issues. But I think it would be important for us to look at that as another means to get the information out to whether they're poor people or whether they're senior citizens or whatever instantaneously, Mayor. And that's all.
Thank you. I know we do have set up for the local radio station in our EOC a base that they can report from if we have an ongoing, like, big-scale emergency where, like a flood...
Well, you know, an emergency is not having your trash picked up when it's supposed to.
That is true.
And we do have, as you know, we have about five radio stations in town, and I'd like them all to be broadcasting our stuff. And it wouldn't be a big deal to send them an email and ask them to put it on as a PSA.
I think they're on the... They're all shaking their head. They've been getting every...
Have they?
Everything. I don't think that... But I haven't heard... They haven't asked us for anything other than what we've been sending. Is that correct? Okay, yeah. So there... I don't know if we have five. There might be a new one that... I'm sure Rebecca, Tom will make sure.
You know, Cable 10 is awfully important because, you know, everybody's got a TV, and they can put that on Cable 10. It might take some negotiations with the plant board, but we ought to... Well, school closings are on, but that's about it from what I saw. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roach had old business. Was that it? Anybody else have old business before we go to new business?
Well, mine are quick. The... We're getting ready to have a surplus sale, it looks like, next month, which was on the consent agenda, and I just wanted to... You all know me, so I wanted to make sure that we're selling or getting rid of stuff that we don't need, in particular vehicles or equipment that we're never gonna use. And second thing would... I don't think we've... I asked Mr. Moore about that. I don't think we've met with the county on the... Have we met with the county on the interlocal agreement on emergency management? Or has anybody met with them?
A letter has been forwarded to the county, but I think that's where we are at this point.
And so what I would want to make sure we do is not what we did last year, which was by the time it ever got very far, because we got on it a little later than this year. We were in the budget cycle, and we said, well, we'll go ahead and just pay for all of it again. So I just want to make sure that this goes through the process in a timely enough fashion that we don't then just say we're gonna pay for it all again.
The county judge, I spoke to him briefly, and he's gonna take it back to his court members. Last word I've got. Set.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, there were two other... I'll be quick. Is that all right?
Yep. Commissioner still has the floor, so we can go back to the...
I'm sorry.
You know what, Commissioner Sauer? I welcome somebody that has more old business than I do, so you just go right ahead. I'm done.
Thanks, Commissioner Sauer.
The... I thought you were. The other two quick items is I'd like a report at the next work session on the Economic Development Conference that we were going to host with the county judge. You know, I don't know where the invitations are on that, and I know there are a lot of schedules that have to be made. And also, one other report for the work session, I'd like to hear either from Chief Abrams or his crime prevention officer, a report on what are we doing there with the new schedule and what's going on, especially neighborhood watch, you know, is a big issue of us. And I think that combines so well with the neighborhood associations that I know that Commissioner Bowers is concerned about.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Well, glad to hear it.
Did anybody else have any others?
I want to have one, but I think it's gonna be covered later on, and it has to do with the fire department, the ambulance building. We're having a problem, but I've read somewhere where we got a new... We're going to something new, so I think we're solving that problem.
Chief?
Getting a higher rate of return.
It sounds like we're not solving that problem.
I didn't mean to laugh. He's going very slow.
I think I understand your question. There's a couple things that we're doing right now, one being with the interlocal with the county, but also with the ambulance billing. And it's up, our ambulance billing is. We've been using a new billing company for a little over a year now, and we went from about $260 per run to about $340 per run that we collect. So it's up, Steve, probably about $150,000 at this point this year, probably. Is that the question that you're asking? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Next would be, we have 10.1 of the new business, a resolution relating to a loan assistance from the federally assisted wastewater-evolving loan fund. This would be for four different projects from the... are eligible for funding under state evolving fund, and those projects are listed, Benson CSO Separation, Olarsburg Road, pump station replacement, rolling acres, infill, and infiltration? Women? INIs? Infill and infiltration?
Inflow.
Inflow and infiltration, yes, sorry. Emergency generation for the SCADA system. So are there any questions? Any of those? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved, Mayor.
Move by Commissioner Sauer. Second. Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion? CNN clerk please call.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 10.1 is adopted. 10.2 was listed previously as 7.5, and... Let's see, who's that?
Yes, I was just gonna suggest that...
Senator Polis?
Senator Director.
Senator Director, okay. 7.10 is police, okay. I guess Mr. Scalfo, you coming, giving an update on the completion date for the Crestwood drainage project? That was previously scheduled to end December of 2014, but now it's 2015.
We... During construction, we found two sections of pipe, one off Laurel Lane, one off of Schinkle Lane, that physically could not be rehabbed due to obstructions in the pipe. So we pulled those two projects out of the original Crestwood. The original Crestwood project is complete, and we pulled those out to give our consultant time to look at alternative designs, figure out a way to make those work, and then those will be rebid as a separate project. We don't think it will take the full year, but we wanted to make sure we had plenty of time instead of having to come back and ask for more time later. We actually think it'll be done probably sometime this summer.
Good.
But there's no additional cost, is that correct?
The additional cost for the engineering was approved several months ago. What happened is we just forgot to add time to their contract when we did the cost. So it's kind of a... That was, I don't know, change order two, this is two A.
Right. Thank you so much. 7.10 is a grant from Police Department, so Chief and Rebecca Hall, Chief Abrams and
Just wanted you to explain the grant. It was a last, kind of a last-minute item to the agenda. Okay. Yeah, be happy to. From our perspective, and Rebecca will have a lot more insight as far as the actual grant and application and the process, but basically, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety provides monies that are available to local agencies to improve their enforcement efforts, traffic enforcement. And the primary goal is to, obviously, to reduce impaired drivers and crash locations throughout your city or county. We have had a really good working relationship with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety over the past, oh, I'm gonna say, what, probably six or eight years now we've been doing this grant. And our high level of output has been able to translate nicely with them as far as, it's obvious that studies have shown that the more traffic involvement that police have, even if it isn't the individual that's being stopped, the one that's driving by and seeing the active police cruiser there, tends to slow people down, cause them to be a little more cautious. So the overall goal is accident reduction, and we've had a really nice result from that over the past six or eight years. So just in seeking the grant, again, basically what it does is it reimburses overtime money for officers who can come out. It's completely reimbursable. And also, even as much as the vehicle, the fuel that is used in the vehicle during the tour of duty that the officer works. And also, it funds some equipment, such as radars and PBTs, portable breath tests for VUI detection. So it's a really good program, and some we're happy to participate in and to keep a strong relationship with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. On the grant, is it a straight grant, or is there a match to it?
There's no match involved. It just pays for, as Chief Abrams said.
I like that. Me, too.
It's also, we've expanded a little bit in the last couple of years. It also includes distracted driving, so if they find somebody texting or something like that, they can also pull them over for that. So it's a good program.
While you're there, may I ask a follow-up question if there are no other comments? The vest cameras, I know you've been looking into that. Do you have any other... We have. We're still testing those, and with the onslaught of interest nationwide over the past six or eight months, you can imagine vendors are coming out of the woodwork. So right now, some of the technology that's available...
So right now, some of the technology that's available, I'm pretty confident that it's going to be obsolete because new stuff's coming on the market. So we're kind of taking our time in testing that. Also had some questions with regards to open records as it pertains to the maintenance of those videos, and some of that stuff's still kind of in limbo. Some questions have been answered through the AG's office. So it's kind of a, it's important thing, it's something I definitely want to look for, but they're really, I don't want to be in a hurry on it because I'm thinking the technology will improve, the definitions of open records and retention will be more defined. And honestly, I think that probably, right now, I don't think there's, there's some grants that are out there and available right now, but they're pretty minimal. And I'm thinking, and I know that from the federal level, I know that the President has made a push through the national, through the AG's office. So I'm thinking that there may be some money freed up, hopefully later on in the fiscal year, that, you know, we'll be able to apply for some grant monies to help offset that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right, so...
I move for approval of those two items.
Both items.
Okay, we can do, yeah, we can do both together.
Yeah.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Haynes, second by Commissioner Sauer. Any discussion? CNN, please call.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, thank you. Is there any other new business before we go to our closed session?
Mayor, I move we go into closed session in accordance with KRS 61.810.
Sub 1, sub B, property KRS 61810, sub 1, sub C litigation. Was that your motion?
That was.
Okay. And second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? CNN, please call.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Okay. We are in closed session. We're not going to come back and conduct any business.